And we are reconvening as the Washington County Board of Commissioners in work session. Yes, Commissioner Treese?
So we're staying on the same channel. Does the public, is the public aware that they could access us in this manner? I'm, I'm just concerned about making sure that our work session is available to those that use normal channels.
Ms. Noriola, please address that question. Thank you.
The live stream is continuing, so anyone that logs in will be able to see it and will also make a note of it in iAgenda.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Treese. I've, I've come to learn to leave all those logistics to staff. Magic happens even though I may not know what the magic is. Alrighty, so it looks like we're going to pick up not with topic four, but with topic five, the American Rescue Plan Act, also known as ARPA Status Update. Is that correct?
That is correct, and thank you, Dorian Russell, our Senior Program Administrator of ARPA, for joining us early and your flexibility. And with that, I will turn it over to Ms. Russell.
Great, thanks so much. And looks like the slides are up. Thank you. Well, thank you so much, Board of Commissioners. I'm really glad to have the opportunity to provide you a status update today on all of the investments within your adopted ARPA framework. Could we go to the next slide, please? Thank you. So the purpose of today's presentation is to provide that status update on your current ARPA investments, including what we have spent so far and the community impacts that we've been able to evaluate so far. We have coincided this update with the submission of our current projects and expenditures update to the U.S. Treasury, and this presentation can be a summary of that work. As you know, your ARPA portfolio is quite comprehensive, and I'm prepared to follow up with more detailed programmatic information on our individual programs if there's that desire. Next slide, please. So reminders about the purpose of ARPA. The guiding purpose of the American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA, our state and local fiscal recovery funds is to provide governments with the resources needed to respond to and recover from the pandemic. Our federal Congress and the U.S. Treasury created and allocated these funds to ensure that local governments like us can address the public health and economic impacts of the pandemic with that special attention on addressing disproportionate impacts for marginalized communities. In the Treasury's own language, one of the central goals of ARPA is to build strong, resilient, and equitable recovery by making investments that support long-term growth and opportunity. And I'm really glad that the board's direction directly aligns with that ARPA purpose. Next slide, please. So revisiting the Washington County ARPA values, the things we stand for, the foundational concepts we're using as we create our ARPA-funded programs. We're leading with equity, resilience, collaboration, and good governance. And later in the presentation, I'll show you how we're applying this in our implementation work. Next slide, please. So Washington County's principles, the how we will get there. Each of these are informed by these, by the values in the last slide, and these are really the rules that we're using for designing and implementing our ARPA efforts. That includes centering racial equity, investing in public health first, leveraging multiple resources, being innovative, proactive, and strategic, and I'll give you a couple of examples later on, seeking collaborative solutions, and working with transparency. Next slide, please. So our current ARPA strategy, our program teams are implementing multi-year recovery strategies within the existing program allocations. So our teams are working to balance both community need for immediate response and that strategic planning for a resilient, long-term pandemic recovery. We're leaning into your board adopted ARPA values, thinking about ourselves as a convenor and a collaborator. Across our ARPA programs, we're collaborating with state and local governments, with school districts, and community organizations to develop smarter programs that strengthen our connections, combine our resources for broader impact, and make sure we have greater efficiency with these dollars. Throughout our work, we're thoughtfully designing programs with community partners and making sure we are centering racial equity in the programs that we design, and we're continuing to co-design our recovery efforts with the community-based organizations that we have in that pre-existing COVID-19 racial equity work group. And finally, as you know, the current ARPA strategy is very holistic. The portion of this framework that we colloquially continue to refer to as public health investments actually span a diversity of departments and divisions with comprehensive community impacts. For example, many programs aimed at stabilizing households can be considered both public health investments and economic recovery investments. Next slide, please. So looking at our current ARPA status, programs and contracts are in development. As a reminder, we're in month five of a board adopted ARPA framework, and from a programmatic perspective, this period has really included the heavy lifting of design and early implementation. Many of our contracts are currently in development. In total, we've spent 15% of our ARPA Tranche One funds, and that value will dramatically increase as contracts continue to get out the door. But I want to underscore that this is overall good news. When I was in front of your board last summer, and again during the Delta surge, we were concerned that we might spend our Tranche One funds much more rapidly than this. So I'm very happy to report that we are balancing response needs while also being thoughtful and strategic and taking the time to design multi-year recovery programs with those outcomes in mind. It is amazing that we have the ability to do this. Our teams are leaning into those board adopted values, the equity, resilience, collaboration, and good governance. Again, we're co-designing recovery efforts with local governments and other community organizations. I want to underscore that this takes time to do well. We're being mindful to focus on partnership, recovery, and racial equity. This ARPA experience is in direct contract, contrast to the Work for Cares, and we really have the opportunity to work hand in hand with community to go through formal RFP processes and design with long-term resilience in mind. One of my goals today is to show you the impacts that your investments have already had in this very short time. But while we've had incredible impact, I want to point out that this comprehensive program evaluation work is preliminary, and I'll be really glad to report back to you in future months as we continue to understand the impact that we're having. Can we go to the next slide, please? Fantastic. So thinking about our framework and speaking to how we're evaluating our impact, I am so proud to report that our ARPA framework has received national recognition on the ARPA Data Dashboard created by Results for America. This dashboard is a tool that's assessing how governments all across the country are using evidence to ensure impactful and equitable investment. We were one of just four counties in the U.S. to receive a perfect score on Results for America's data evidence and outcomes assessment. Even more, when I spoke with Results for America earlier this week, their team shared that Washington County's framework reflects what Results for America independently determined is the ideal model. To sum it up, we're a best practice example for how to spend ARPA dollars in an effective and equitable way, and I'm working with our comms team right now to share a press release on this great news later this week. Next slide, please. So getting into our preliminary progress report for each of your investment areas. Your first ARPA investment area, Protecting Public Health, includes two programmatic activities, Surviving COVID-19 and Meeting Basic Needs. This includes isolation and quarantine support, vaccination, testing, community education, providing basic needs, focused wraparound services, and services that are aimed at disproportionately impacted populations. Lots of programs. These programs are holistically supporting businesses, schools, communities, families, and individuals who are directly impacted by COVID-19, both with life-saving services as well as referrals for other programs in stabilization and holistic well-being. This area also includes funding for work that public health is mandated to do by the Oregon Health Authority, including ongoing response, disease investigation, and other essential public services. You'll hear a lot more about this topic on Thursday, and also the status of the pandemic overall in part two of this conversation, where I'll be joined by our Chief Epidemiologist and Public Health Division Manager. There's just, there are so many amazing things to report within this area. I've pulled out just a few underneath programmatic impacts on this slide. I want to call out that our team has investigated over 1,400 at-risk settings, including schools, daycares, high-risk workplaces, long-term care facilities, and more. And we've had almost 1,400 referrals to other support services for households in quarantine, with 62% of those households identifying as Latinx. Next slide, please. So amid all of the stress of leading through a pandemic, I want to take a moment and share some positive impact stories. Please take a moment to read this story through for yourself and really reflect and understand what your impacts really mean for the people that we serve. So I'll just allow you to read this for a moment. This is just one of several examples for what your investments really mean at the individual and household level. Can we go to the next slide, please? We have so many different positive impact stories. Here's another example of how we're keeping schools, daycares, workplaces, et cetera, open. Our team continues to respond to outbreaks quickly and nimbly. Again, one of 1,400 examples in how Washington County is able to quell an outbreak quickly and get back to healthy environments for continued operations across different sectors. Next slide, please. We're also innovating and trying new strategies with our services with that holistic approach. I want to highlight that Genevieve, Jenna, and others on that team have described that this has been really important for Washington County to meet community where they are in the pandemic. This team has reflected that our partnerships with community-based organizations have been deeply critical to providing culturally responsive services for communities of color. We're learning that non-medical interventions are helping to strengthen connection with community and help to build trust for medical interventions like COVID-19 vaccinations. So we're learning that by combining different public health interventions, for example, food boxes and vaccine education together, it's been really important to meet community where they are. And community-based organizations have been able to do this in a culturally responsive way and a tailored approach that makes sense for different communities. Next slide, please. So looking at your investment area in community stabilization and wellness, this is holistic recovery that considers the physical, mental, social, and economic well-being of households. Your approved investments in this area are comprehensive and continue to be foundational as we develop and begin implementing programs here. Within this investment area, ARPA is funding activities like childcare support, behavioral health, family health, ensuring shelter and safety, and utility assistance. Again, many of these we colloquially refer to as public health, when many of these investments are also leading to more economic stability. This investment area in particular is one where we are following a very thoughtful and strategic approach to community recovery and developing multi-year strategies in collaboration with other governments and with community partners. And I'll be very excited to focus on that maximum impact over time and report back to you when we're further along in implementation. Next slide, please. So while many of our programs are early in design and early in implementation, one positive impact so far has been Washington County's partnership with school districts in addressing youth mental health needs. Information from school staff, from parents and youth, working with county staff, we've been able to strategically respond to the urgency of mental health needs with updated curriculum, new classroom infrastructure, and staff training to better serve students in Washington County. Next slide, please. Your investment area in stabilizing and supporting the local economy has hit the ground running in program design for a thoughtful recovery for both workforce and for local businesses. As with many programs, staff has been doing the heavy lifting in program design and early implementation. We have several requests for proposals out right now that have been launched and are in progress, and our business recovery centers have already served thousands of businesses with trainings, workshops, technical assistance, and more. Next slide, please. Great. Here we have an example of how economic recovery programs are keeping Washington County businesses alive despite facing adversity in the pandemic. Our BRCs continue to provide dozen, dozens of online supports and trainings, and one of the partners that we have in this work, Adelante, shared with us how Olivia's Finds Foods have been able to remain open because of the technical assistance they got to help address the debt that they accumulated in the pandemic. So many positive impact stories happening right now out in the community with the ARPA investments we have to date. Next slide, please. So for community engagement, our work in community engagement is some of the most innovative. We're centering equity priorities by co-designing our community engagement approach with community leaders. Again, we're co-designing how we do the work. By serving as a collaborator and convenor with other local governments as well as culturally specific organizations, we're reducing duplicated efforts across ARPA-funded jurisdictions, preventing burnout of the same community partners that we share across the region, and also reducing our administrative needs. I'll be very excited to follow up on this project as it continues. Next slide, please. Really underscoring here how innovative this is, we're deferring to community on how best to engage genuinely and with transparency. While this work is still in co-development, it's very innovative and important for our community engagement work moving forward and sustaining for the long term. We've developed a collaborative for cities and community-based organizations where we're identifying engagement best practices and developing alignment and a shared approach that explicitly centers populations disproportionately impacted by the pandemic. Next slide, please. Great. Importantly, your ARPA investments continue to provide essential government services. We're remaining resilient and flexible, I know you've heard this before, and nimble in maintaining our services without gaps in our service delivery. Really importantly, and different, not every organization, not every local government can say this, we've continued to serve our residents directly in our county facilities. Offering this level of service and flexibility is not something everyone has been able to do, and we've been very intentional in maintaining a variety of different inclusive routes to accessing services. Next slide, please. And finally, I want to let you know that we have not yet dipped into our contingency funds, and we have those funds available still for unexpected needs. Staff are continuing to evaluate continuity of government operations needs and assess whether we have the capacity we need to continue to sustain ARPA programs as we grow them. And we're also mindful that possible unexpected needs may be just around the corner as we've seen throughout the pandemic. Next slide, please. Finally, this update is part of a continued conversation. Evaluate, we are continuing to evaluate the work for your current investments, and that's ongoing. This presentation is really preliminary and just an update and understanding outcomes as we continue to learn from our pandemic experience and project future needs. We're actively assessing what community needs are and continuously assessing our own ARPA structure to ensure that we are investing in response and recovery needs appropriately. Today's presentation, again, is just one part of two this week. Today, we reviewed the status of ARPA investments, and on Thursday, we're going to review the status of the pandemic, including future projections and the key considerations that you need as decision-makers who also value science-based decisions in the future ARPA investments you might make. As for next steps overall, our ARPA strategic planning includes reviewing best practice frameworks in recovery, developing an investment priority evaluation tool for your board to assess and rank your priorities and investment options, and of course, developing a more comprehensive data assessment and reporting tool. Next slide, please. Once again, this Thursday, we're reviewing pandemic trends and future models. Again, we really want to do our best to support your use of science in decision-making. We're also going to discuss the ways in which scientists are interpreting both the challenging realities of the continuation of the pandemic and ways that scientists are holding optimism for the future. So really looking forward to that conversation on Thursday when we reconvene. Next slide, please. And that's all I have for you. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have about this update.
Fantastic, Dorian. Commissioners, questions or comments? Who would like to go first? Well, go ahead, Commissioner Rogers.
Yeah, it's a good report. I appreciate the work. I don't think any of us are going to disagree with that. It's excellent, but I ponder what happens next. And I'm not saying with the monies that you presently have, but if the economy doesn't recover exactly like we think it is going to, it could be recessionary times, it could be a lot of different things that's happened. Is the work that we've done, especially with the business recovery centers, as well as the outreach, is that a one and done in your mind, or what is sustainability about this? I mean, you can solve lots and lots of things if you throw money at it. And we had a lot of federal money, but that's got to stop. I mean, we can't continue to do that. So once that stops, have you thought what your next steps are in terms of recommendations to this board of saying, okay, we're done with the money, but there is some good work that needs to continue? So tell me, beyond this, what's the game plan?
Great, thanks for that question. It's something that we continue to ask ourselves and strategize in, and we've been very transparent with all of our partners in recognizing that these are one-time funds, trying to build towards long-term resilience, and that takes thoughtfulness, and that takes strategy. We know that we have to obligate these funds by the end of 2024 and spend them by the end of 2026, and that's it. In terms of that off-ramping conversation, we're really thinking about how can we, one, address the pandemic impact? So for example, that example of a business owner that was able to get out of debt and get to a better, more stable, continued operations of their business is one example, how we might use one-time funds to get back to more of a pre-pandemic financial stability level for our businesses. I also want to say the work that we're doing now is really strengthening the relationships we have and also building new structures for collaboration that we didn't have before that will definitely carry on beyond the ARPA period in how we do the work in that way. Does that answer your question? We're definitely starting to have those conversations surrounding what that off-ramp looks like in future years. But I will admit, we're very much in a program design phase as well, knowing that we haven't quite gotten back to that baseline.
Yeah, I just comment, you did, but there's two words that you used are important. One was collaboration, probably even more, 10 times more is relationships. So we talked about pandemic, that's what we're facing, but that, it'll go. And then we'll have other issues. So if I had my magic wand and suggestion, it would be that you use these funds to develop the relationships you're talking about to see if there isn't either private sector or others who would step in and backfill so that there is some resiliency when other things happen, that this isn't the one and done. And we said, well, do you remember way back in '22, this is now we're in '24, '25, we had this pandemic, but you know, we have other issues now. So the relationship, that's the key word. That's really important, so, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Rogers. Anyone else? Okay, well, seeing none. I'll finish up then. Once again, thank you for this interim update, as you mentioned. I have a couple of questions. On the slide for the Washington County's Best Practice Leader for ARPA as determined by Results for America, one of four counties nationally. I know not all counties received CARES Act funding, and frankly, I can't remember for ARPA either. So perhaps maybe on Thursday or in a future update, you could help me have an appreciation for approximately how many counties were in receipt of direct ARPA disbursements? I know it's north of 150, because there are over 362 some odd counties in the country, according to NACO, I think is the number that they, they mentioned to us. So that's, that's a detailed question. This is just fantastic follow-through from staff, from the board direction, and I am grateful for it. Partnerships like we've never had before, collaborations, new systems, and accountability. Just terrific. Thank you for working so hard for our community, and thank you, Dorian, for being our point person. I really appreciate it. I know ahead of us, as you've, you've put on the slides, continued conversations. I know there's tremendous pent-up demand for knowing how things are going. I hear it from mayors, I hear it from questions I get from various city council members, and also school board members. So I'm wondering, in your, your plans ahead, are you considering having another all-elected official's communication? Even if you take, even not necessarily you, but our team members take this video presentation and a link to it and a link to the slides and emails it to all those folks? Because I'll just say, I keep getting hit with some of the same questions from both city councilors as well as school board members. How can you help us with these mental health needs? What are you doing to help us with vaccinations of the kids? And it's happening, but somehow the communication to them isn't sufficient. And could really use a little help.
You're hearing, then, we plan to take the excerpt of today's conversation as well as Thursday's conversation and share that with our local electeds as well as our city managers, special district managers, and also share with our Washington County legislators through our GR team.
Thank you. You know, we did have, we ran an experiment. Thank you, Dorian, for helping us running that experiment of a town hall just for elected officials on ARPA and CRF. You know, at this juncture, everybody's so zoomed out that I'm reticent to, to suggest we have another one, but you know, let us know. This board's been very good about saying, hey, if there's interest, count us in, so we'll go from there. And one last detail. Maybe you put it in the work session topic sheet, and I neglected to see it. Could you run those 2024 and 2026 expectations by me again? So I'll write them down and hopefully remember? Because I know this is the second time you've tried to get me to understand it and remember it.
We need to obligate all of our funding, so know exactly how we're going to spend the entirety of our ARPA funds by the end of 2024, but we have until the end of 2026 to spend everything out.
Thank you. Really appreciate it. Alrighty, well, job well done. That is fantastic. Thanks for being here, and we'll look forward to more great information on Thursday.
Thanks so much.
At this juncture, Ms. Angie, topic-wise, where would you like to go next?
So we do have lots of moving parts due to changes of time, so thank you to the board's flexibility. So Diane Tedaguchi-Dennis and I have been connecting, and CWS team is ready to move into executive session. We will then, after that item, take a lunch break, and then at 1:00, we will actually pick up with the census. And then at 1:00, we will actually pick up with the census item prior to the CAT update. And the reason why is because we have an outside speaker, and so we just want to be respectful of their time.
May I add that for the work session at 1:00, to use the Zoom link that's in the afternoon work session?
And for the executive session, I have to go through the motion business first. But for that executive session, what link should we use for that? The one that was in our calendars for that? Okay, terrific. All righty, so are all the commissioners following that okay? Okay, great. Okay, at this juncture, I need to ask for a motion to adjourn to executive session pursuant to ORS 192.660 sub 2 sub B for the purposes of real property transaction consideration. We have a motion from Commissioner Treese. We have a second from Commissioner Phi. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand. Thank you, commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously 5 to 0. See you in the other link.